I got it.
I got it.
Good morning, everyone. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The prayer today is, Father God, your word promises that you will guide me if I seek you. Show me how to order my time and arrange my schedule to accomplish your will. In Jesus' name, amen. No one has signed for public comments, so we'll move right to item number two.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. For item number two, on October 17th, I approved a cash transfer from the Common Pleas Court General Fund Adult Probation Salary Account to the Community Corrections Fund in order to cover payments for payroll. And that's all. For item number three, on October 17th, I acknowledged for Job and Family Services the following new hire appointments as the Executive Director of Job and Family Services complied with the Board of Commissioners recruitment and hiring procedures for Kelly Bidlak, Clerical Specialist III, replacement effective September 29th, 2025. Also, on October 17th, 2025, I accepted for maintenance the resignation of Joan Statley, Part-Time General Communications Clerk/Switchboard Operator, Number 1912-1, to be effective September 29th, 2025. I also granted for maintenance permission to advertise for the position of Part-Time General Communications Clerk/Switchboard Operator, Number 1912-1. This position will remain posted until filled, and that is all.
Thank you. Item four, Adrian. Good morning.
Good morning. Adrian Gordon with the Commissioner's Office. Today's financials included cash transfer from the Board of DD from their operating fund to the Residential Services Fund for Ohio Department of Education pass-through funding for local school districts and waiver-match costs. There are two travel encumbrances from the Common Pleas Court to attend the Supreme Court of Ohio and the Ohio Judicial Systems Specialized Docket Conference in Columbus, Ohio. There's also a formal contract PO from Maintenance to VL Chapman Electric Incorporated for the new generator at the West Joga Senior Center. Among the vouchers are $21,545 from Maintenance to Lalo Masonry and Concrete LLC for sidewalk repairs out in front of the Annex Building in Chardon, and $191,976.99 from Water Resources to Agro Sludge Incorporated for the Aquila Wastewater Treatment Plant Improvements Project. And finally, there's a revenue certification from the Board of DD for the revenue that they transferred from the Ohio Department of Education pass-through funding that was not previously budgeted.
Second.
Commissioner Bricky.
Aye.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Good day, Adrian.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Karen Murphy, Frank Antonucci, ADP.
So, the County Archives and Records Enterprise is requesting the Board approve the abolishment of the petty cash drawer containing $40 as it no longer is necessary to make change for customers and that $40 be returned to the general fund, effective October 21st, 2025.
These are the kind of things that I'm like, oh, this is something the Commissioners have to do. Forty bucks, alright.
That's what we said, too.
I know.
It's a windfall, anyway, look at it.
I feel like I learned something new every day, just when I think I know what I'm doing in this job. I'm like, alright, I gotta vote for 40 bucks. Okay, let's go.
Yeah, we've just gotten to a place where we've had $40 in cash lying around in a drawer that never gets used because it's 2025, and Karen was like, oh, they shouldn't just have that sitting here.
Well, I appreciate you closing the loop on that, Karen. So, I'll move to approve item number five.
Second.
Commissioner Bricky.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Good morning. Shane Hajar with the County Engineers Office. Now that we have that $40, I'd like to spend it.
In one place? We're dividing an hour.
The Engineers Office is requesting the Board approve and execute Resolution 25-190 to order the asphalt resurfacing of Gingrich Road, County Highway 34, Section A in Burton Township. This resolution requests the Board approve and execute the title sheet of specifications. Further, this resolution sets the bid opening for November 7th, 2025, at 10:05 a.m. using Bid Express at the Engineers Office. Notice that the bid opening will be advertised on October 23rd and on the county website.
When was the last time it was paved, that road?
The last time it was paved was 2013, 12, 2012.
Thank you.
I move to approve item number six.
Second.
Commissioner Bricky. Commissioner DeMora.
Yes.
Thank you. This road was on our road list for this year, but it was considered, you know, a holdback in case we needed it for other projects, but our projects are all closing out at or below where we expected them to. So, it's an opportunity to use some of 2025's money. This project will actually go into construction in May.
Oh, great.
So, we'll be ahead of the game. Thank you.
Item seven, Prosecutor.
Morning.
Good morning.
Okay. Jim Flay is from the Prosecutor's Office. This is the final leg of this renovation project. So, we did get the contract back. Laura's reviewed it, I've reviewed it. Seven is Prosecutor's Office requesting the Board approve and execute construction agreement with Millstone Management Group Incorporated for Joga County Prosecutor's Office renovation project in the amount of $379,400. And eight, we are requesting that the Board accept the performance of payment bonds for Millstone Management Group Incorporated.
Our prosecutor should not be reviewing his own contract for the benefit of his own building. That's highly inappropriate. You know, even a first law, your law student would know, as you would say, somebody else has to be reviewing those contracts. I find it a little bit embarrassing as someone in the public, you just blatantly, because the prosecutor said he needs money, you unapproved it. So, I find that quite inappropriate after you've been tearing down everybody else requesting for the money. Item number nine, or I'm sorry, number 10, you never even mentioned $310,000 that's on item number 10. Wasn't even brought up. So, something you need to review that, too. Thank you for your time. I would also like a public information request on all the contracts regarding the number seven, the Prosecutor's Office, and any other bids that were made for that as well. Question would be also, is that conflict? I knew the name of Miller Construction, I believe, or Millstone, I'm so sorry. I believe there's some of an attorney involved with that, too, or owner? I think that ought to be looked at as well. Is there any relationship between them and what the Prosecutor's Office is doing? Thank you for your time very much.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Gail Rusi, League of Women Voters. I just have a question about what the change was for the Maintenance Department position?
That was the position description for the actual job for the director.
Uh-huh.
Yes, that was the change.
So, it changed.
It did, yes. It hasn't been updated since 2007.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, so that'll be on the website, then?
Yes, we'll post it this week.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My topic. I saw yesterday late the item pertaining to $400,000 for Prosecutor Flay's office. I find that alarming and concerning in an era of Doge and trying to cut back on luxury glamour spending. Pardon me, let me catch my breath.
Calm down.
I've looked, thank you. I've looked up this morning average Ohio home prices. Ohio has hit an average of $261,000 in Joga. We're just north of $400,000. And when we're talking about a $400,000 spend, which I consider to be a luxury item, in this era of people with rising delinquencies and struggling with property taxes, on the heels of a recent 33% property tax rise, I find that egregious. I'm frustrated with myself. If it was on previous agendas, I've missed it, but when it came on my radar last night, it suddenly popped up and I saw fit to come in here. I'm frustrated that we passed that, and I don't think we should be passing things like it in the future. Thank you.
Anybody else? Hearing none.
I'll just say, I will, yeah, the Prosecutor's Office. I mean, this was on previous agendas, and we did, and we had some pretty extensive discussion about wants versus needs, and this is, this does address a safety concern.
And there's, I think there's one or two more people that are going to be hired, and Jim Flay's office is going to be losing square footage to create another office for an employee. And as time goes on, this is futuristic, but Joga County's growing population slowly, and one of these days it's going to be close to 100,000 people, and the Columbus will have to tell us, oh, you need another judge. So, typical mandates with no money. And it's been on the agenda many times.
It's frustrating to me. Thank you for those responses.
Okay. Item 13, Board Discussion.
Advocate Sion, did you want to speak?
You can come up to the mic. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, Skip Claypool in Chester, Oklahoma. Like two of the previous individuals that spoke, I've got concerns about the Prosecutor's Office project. I don't know that the public knows enough detail about what justifies this. Carolyn, you ran as being somebody a watchdog of tax dollars. I have real concerns about this. It doesn't say courthouse expansion, it doesn't say other offices, it says Prosecutor's Office. And so, the Prosecutor's Office, I've been there, I know what it's all about. $400,000 on a Prosecutor's Office is a lot of money, and I don't see that the public has presented a case to justify that amount of money, and I don't hear enough questions asked about that. So, I'm very concerned about this particular project, and so I'd like to ask you to provide the public with a lot more information about this to justify it. Thank you.
Yeah, again, we did have pretty extensive discussion on a prior meeting about this project, and I asked a lot of questions. So, there has been discussion on this.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Gina Hofstadter, Community and Economic Development. I just come to you this morning to have you authorize Amy to endorse a letter of intent for round three funding for the Demolition Insight Revitalization Grant. So, this would be round three for us. It is reflective of House Bill 96, and Joga County would be allocated $230,000. And they're doing things a little different this time, so tomorrow's, of course, a training. The email came a few weeks ago, maybe even months ago, so we're a little behind the eight ball. I did not receive the email. They do that for, obviously, security reasons and transparency reasons. So, it did come through the Commissioner's Office. It just got to me October 1st, so here I am, obviously, up against a deadline. So, the state did allow me to present today and gave us some time to get this in by end of business day. So, we're going to ask for your permission to do the letter of intent, which would designate us as a lead entity within, for this grant to operate.
Have we been provided the letter of intent?
The letter of intent comes as a template from the state. In prior years, it was signed by the county administrator. I don't believe it ever came to the Board. So, in my research, that's kind of what I discovered. So, we're trying now to, I can provide it for you. It's a template. I have it here. It can be endorsed by the Commissioners and/or so.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to know what we're approving.
But, yeah, in that email, it was sent.
And this is for demolition of distressed homes or even commercial buildings?
As well.
And brownfield as well.
Yeah. So, our last round was an allocation of $500,000. That first round, we were guaranteed $500,000 as well, but we were granted 4.1. That would have been the ICP LLC Joga Lake Project that was done. And then, we are still kind of in the thick of finishing up the last round, which was Chardon Schools, as well as a private home. The private home has not been done yet.
And so, what does it mean to be a lead entity, Gina?
The lead entity is just a designation for somebody to manage the grant. And obviously, I'm managing that through Community and Economic Development.
Got it.
There's a lot to this process.
And that's because we don't have a land bank? Is that?
Pretty much. Yeah, land banks traditionally are, you know, managing these in conjunction with maybe a department of my size with some consultants. You know, we don't have a consultant, and we're obviously working through it, doing the best we can. You know, they're no joke. There are a lot of work. There are really a lot. There's been a ton of learning. I mean, I was basically handed the 4.1 million dollar grant, you know, shortly after I started. So, I haven't been here that long, but we're working through it. We've been successful so far. Still need to perform an audit on the first grant and when we close up, but we're also managing CDBG, and then, of course, the Brownfield grant is underway as well. So, yeah, so lead entity is really just a formality at this point so that somebody can be in charge. There are other options for you to designate anyone else as a lead entity. That would be a township, any other municipality, but they're not standing in line to want to manage. And I can't really blame them, so, yeah.
So, do you have a motion for us?
Yeah, I actually have to just kind of do it on the fly if it's a motion that's needed, but I would really be asking to, you know, have you grant permission for Amy Bivand to endorse the letter by end of today so that I can get it over to the state.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to endorse the letter designating Joga County Economic Development as the lead entity.
Perfect.
Second, the motion.
Appreciate it. Do you have any other questions?
Oh, any more discussion? You're good? Call for vote.
Hi. Commissioner DeMora.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your hard work.
Appreciate that.
Item 14.
The Commissioners Office is requesting the Board move into executive session for the purpose of discussing the compensation of public employees pursuant to ORC 121.22G2.
So, moved.
Second.
And it will be joining us Kathy, Megan, Adrian, and Mark.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bricky. Commissioner DeMora.
Yes.
Sorry, I was writing.
I feel like my rhythm is off today.
I know.
It's too short of an agenda.
End at 9:53.
All right, in at 9:53.
Okay, audio's on.
I have you returning at 10:33 a.m.
With some action.
Megan Erickson, Commissioner's Office. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board continue to offer the 1C Anthem Health Care Plan and current 2025 waiver rate for elected officials until the completion of their current term.
Second.
Mr. Bricky?
Aye.
Mr. Bor.
Yes.
The Commissioner's Office is also requesting the board approve and accept the 2026 Giaga County SEBCO Anthem Health Care, Anthem Rx Prescription and Deltadental Renewal Plans and Rates Plan 1F and 1C to be effective January 1, 2026.
You said 1F and 1C, so the 1C is for the...
Elected officials.
Just for the elected official.
Yes.
I got it, all right. Move to approve?
Second. Call for vote.
Commissioner Bricky? Aye.
Yes.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and accept the revised 2026 Giaga County Employee Waiver Rates to be effective January 1, 2026.
And that does not include the elected officials, is that correct?
That does not include the elected officials. This is just for employees.
Second. Call for vote.
Commissioner Bricky?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBoer.
Yes.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
Anything else? I make the motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Call for vote.
Call in favor.
Aye.